Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Today's Wednesday, November the 5th. I see that we have on the agendas a pledge of allegiance. If anyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tammy, would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly, sir. Please let the record show that Chairman Shawn Poole is absent tonight. Vice Chair Gene Nelson.
Yes.
Member Larry Daley.
Here.
Member Laurie Simpson. Please let the record show that Laurie is absent this evening. Member Dennis Kapp.
Here.
And Member Bob Breedlove.
Here.
Thank you.
And Rain Stoudt's here.
And please let the record show also that Mr. Stoudt is here.
I noticed him sitting there. Okay, we've got the... Do I need to read this, Tammy, the official notice?
Sir, if you would, please, just for the record.
All righty. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the City of Port Ritchie's Planning and Zoning Board Wednesday, November the 5th, 2014 at 7:00 PM, and the City Council meeting on Tuesday, November 11th at 7:30 PM, both being held in City Hall, 6333 Ridge Road, Port Ritchie, Florida, 34668, concerning the following matter. We have a request by Bell Airport Ritchie LLC to change from a current R3, which is multi-family residential zoning district, to a PUD, or Planned Unit Development. The legal description is as follows, and is as known as parcel ID number 32 hyphen 25 hyphen 16 hyphen 0550 hyphen 00A00 hyphen 0000.
That's good, Mr. Breedlove, thank you.
That's good, thank you much. The file and all related documents can be inspected in the office of the City Clerk, City Hall. Any and all persons interested or concerned with this matter may appear and will be heard with regard to saying. So, that's the notice of the hearing which we will have tonight. First, we have approving the minutes from the prior zoning meetings. I have the zoning... Planning and zoning meeting minutes of 12/19/2012. They're included in the package. Does anyone have any comments?
I make a motion that we approve them.
Motion being made and seconded.
Any general discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Pass the motion. Further, we have the Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes of March 4th, 2014. Again, they are attached, and we're part of the package. Any... You have any discussion on that?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second again.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion to follow? No corrections being noted or made? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Ms. Shook, do we have any announcements?
Perhaps the city manager would like to address everyone.
Okay.
Yes, Tom O'Neill, city manager. I can introduce this item for you, and then we will have a series of individuals that will talk. Tammy Veranna, our professional planning consultant, will make a staff presentation after my comments to you. Tonight, we're here to consider the rezoning of this particular parcel that you introduced moments ago in the notice. The request is to rezone the parcel from R3 to a PUD, Planned Unit Development. Ms. Veranna will go over the specifics of that. Procedurally, what we are here tonight for is to render a decision of the Planning and Zoning Board. That decision will then go to the Port Ritchie City Council in a regular meeting on November 25th for first reading of an ordinance formally rezoning the property. The second reading of the ordinance will occur on December 9th, if indeed you approve and the City Council approves the rezoning request on first reading. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Tammy Veranna for the staff presentation, and we'll follow it up with comments and any additional information by the developer that are here tonight. And then, it is a public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Board, and then you're free to take public comment after the presentation and the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. You might proceed.
Thank you. Tammy Veranna, Veranna Consulting. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. As indicated, the request is for the change of the city's zoning atlas from the multiple family residential R3 zoning district to the Planned Unit Development District as described in Exhibit A, which is the site plan for this property. This would allow a maximum of 78 single-family units. The property is located on the west side of Washington Street between Broadway Avenue and Regis Avenue, and is approximately 32.54 acres more or less. The applicant is Bell Airport Ritchie LLC. The site consists of a little over 15 acres of uplands and 17.19 acre of freshwater wetlands, and there is an isolated wetland in the center of the site, and then a larger wetland system to the east of the site. There are no existing buildings on the site, but there has been some construction activity in conjunction with a prior approval. Previously, the property was... It had entitlements for 192 single-family dwelling units. It was from an R3 district. It was a PUD district in the past. However, that PUD district expired, and it went back to the R3 district. So, the proposed zoning standards for the single-family uses under this Planned Unit Development is for lot areas of 4,000 square feet, lot widths of 40 feet, and lot depths of 100 feet. The maximum impervious surface area would be 75 feet, the maximum building height 40 feet, and the setbacks would be 20 feet for the primary front yard, 10 feet from the secondary front yard, that would be the corner on, you know, the secondary front on a corner lot. The side yard would be 5 feet, the rear yard 20 feet, and any lots that are adjacent to the right-of-way would need to have 35 feet separation from the structure to the right-of-way line, and those would be along Washington Street and also along Broadway. The... Per the criteria in the city's land development code, there's criterias and standards for review of rezonings, so I'll go through those just to make sure that we've covered them all, that the subject... The request does not constitute spot zoning. It's a rezoning from a residential use to a residential use, so it does not constitute that. The proposed single-family lots are smaller than the surrounding developed lots. However, the development is well buffered by the existing development by vegetation to the northeast and south edges of the property, and the applicant has indicated that they'll... They will install landscaping and fencing to integrate the new development with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed single-family use on a residentially zoned site in a residential development area would not create an isolated zoning district. The proposed PUD boundaries will follow the boundaries of the subject properties who are not irregular. The PUD zoning requested is necessary to allow the proposed development. It would not be permissible under the... Some of the standards would not be permissible under the R3 zoning district that exists today. The applicant has indicated that a multi-family residential product would not be as viable in this context as the single-family housing product that's proposed. The proposal is not anticipated to have adverse effects on living conditions in the immediate neighborhood or the surrounding neighborhoods, and the present request for a maximum of 78 dwelling units represents 114 unit decrease of what was approved in the past on that same site. The primary access to the development is going to be located on Washington Street with a secondary access emergency only on Broadway Avenue. The primary access will be gated and controlled by an automated access system. The streets in the development will be private. The next one. The proposed development will offer market rate, single-family housing. The development is not anticipated to create physical or operational conditions in the peaceful residential context that would lead to any property devaluation in the existing neighborhood. In addition to the PUD rezoning conditions of approval, all modifications, uses, and activities on the site must meet all applicable city regulations. So only those things are specifically stated in the conditions of approval would be distinct from what you already have in your land development code. After the... If this proposal is successful and is adopted, the city should take steps to amend the future land use map to redesignate the wetlands on the site to conservation coastal lands... Excuse me. Coastal lands, wetlands, land use category. So that would come later on down the road, so you could expect to see that. The proposed rezoning is not anticipate to deter future improvement of adjacent properties. New dwelling units or other physical improvements on the site should positively contribute to the area's visual aesthetics. The subject site is suitable for single-family uses. It's designated residential on the future land use map, is located on the Collector Street, and is located within an existing single-family area. Excuse me. The PUD concept plan delineates suitable areas of upland for development and sets aside those unsuitable areas, which are wetlands, not for development. A level of service analysis has been conducted for the 78 single-family units. It's been determined that the existing facilities for stormwater drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer, solid waste, and transportation can continue to be met after... Should this development be constructed. The base flood elevation of the site is 13 feet with an average elevation of 12 feet. It's considered to be a special flood hazard area. Any structures would need to be constructed to the base flood elevation prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. And let's see if I've left out anything else. Market rate, private streets. Staff recommends that the board provide a recommendation of approval for this rezoning. There is a recommended motion when you get to that point. If we can add where it says case number, there's nothing there, so we'll just call it Cody River PUD-2014, and I'll remind you later on. So, at this point, is there any question for me before we bring the applicant up to provide the additional?
Would you go back over the width of the lots and the height of the buildings for me?
Yes. The... What was the first one you wanted?
The width of the lots and the height of the buildings.
Okay. The lot width would be 40 feet.
Okay.
The height, maximum height, would be 40 feet.
Is that within our city's codes on the height?
The height that's under the current R3 district is 35 feet, so the applicant is asking for an additional five feet of height. Under the lot width, under the R3 district, for a single-family use, that lot width is 60 feet. So there's a variance of 20 feet. So, 60 feet today, requested is 40 feet.
Tammy, has... Have these variances been approved? Because it appears that there's a variance on every one of the standards, or almost every one of them.
Under... There isn't a variance because under the Planned Unit Development, it provides for variance from your standards in exchange for some, you know, public benefit. So, there may be reductions in certain standards, but more amenities or treatments provided as a result of this. So, a Planned Unit Development is working in instances where you can't meet the strict requirements of the zoning code, and so this is an opportunity for the city to negotiate for a development plan that fits the developer's need and also the city's need.
Okay. If I could make a brief comment. Tammy just basically explained the essence of a Planned Unit Development. It's a trade-off, a give-and-take situation between the city and a potential developer. As she mentioned earlier in her presentation, the allowable density under R3, which the landowner slash developer is allowed to construct, is considerably more. And in our opinion, this was a beneficial development to the city because the density is far less, which means the loading on the transportation system, the nearby streets, the water, the sewer is all less than what the developer is allowed to construct there. So, that's in essence what you do when you go to a Planned Unit Development of this nature, is the give-and-take. And this product here, and the recommendation, is based on our negotiations with the developer over, really, basically, probably, last year or so. And so, we thought it was a beneficial situation because of the lower density.
When you say lower density, Mr. O'Neill, you're speaking of the total 78 units over a 32-acre tract, the 78 units over a usable acreage. What is the usable acreage on this one?
Yes. The proposal is a Planned Unit Development with 78 single-family homes, and I want to say the R3 would allow some 170... 192 dwelling units. So there is a density proposed that's over 100 units less than what they are allowed to do currently.
R3 being multifamily?
Yes, sir.
The R3 district allows for a higher density, but single-family uses are allowed under the R3. So we use the standards for what would be required for a single-family product versus... So, if the... If the property owner wanted to come in with a higher-density development under the strict R3 zoning, which they have today, they could achieve a higher number on the 15 upland acres. Of course, the wetland acres are not developed.
I guess my question may actually be more appropriately addressed to the developer.
Okay.
But it has to do with, he's going for a PUD for a reason, and I'd like to know those reasons articulated, exactly why he thinks a PUD is necessary over a R3, which is what it's currently zoned.
Okay. Well, we'll bring him up.
Thank you. You have a question?
No. Whenever you're through.
I'm done.
Ethan?
Okay. Ms. Veranna is done now, so I'm sure that you could invite the developer up, and they could speak directly to your questions. It's Mr. Carlos Yapi, he's an engineer in...
Josh Bradley.
Yes.
Good evening. Carlos Yapi, 6654 78th Avenue, Purnell Spark. We are a development company that owns the property. To answer your question, why are we doing a PD? Instead of just going to a straight rezoning of the land to another category, the city regulations allow us a vehicle to take the land to the same condition. We could come in today and apply for permits for about 240 units, I think it is, for the whole property, in an apartment complex or a multifamily-type unit, and we just think the market is different today, and this product would be better suited for the neighborhood. That was the reason. This product was actually built for a multifamily condominium townhome type of product. There were 192 units planted and done. Developer went broke and never finished, only did the streets and the utilities. So, we're coming back, ripping out some of the strays and turning it back to a single-family. Any other questions?
At the site, are there any residential homes or residential lots that abut this property?
That abut the property today?
Yes.
They... On the south side of the property, there's a big ditch between us and the properties to the south. There is a mobile home type of units there. To the north, there is vacant land. We actually under-contracted to purchase that land today, and we're trying to see how we can integrate it to our disdevelopment. We didn't have enough time to make it part of this application due to the negotiations with the current owners, but we would like to try to incorporate that land into this project later by creating some additional homes to the north.
I'm looking on the south side of that Broadway Avenue.
Yes.
Is that between this site and any other?
Yes, correct.
Existing home, right?
Yes.
Okay. There's nothing... I'm just trying to visualize if somebody's going to have a 40-foot-tall home, you know, immediately by behind their house.
Well, the 40-foot-tall home requirement comes from some of the homes would be two-storied, and some of the homes would be a single-story. It's just you have the flexibility depending on the market conditions. So, they all are not going to be two-storied. That's not the idea. We just play with markets, see how sales go, depends what people will want. So you've got to have the flexibility to mix the neighborhood.
Well, approximately, how close would be with one of these new homes that you build, would they be to an existing home?
The existing home, well, there is a home across the street from Broadway, and I'm not sure that it's actually a home. It's actually a mobile home unit, like a trailer unit. Probably closest units, houses, will be on the west side, across the street from Washington.
Okay.
And if we're 35 feet from the property line, you take the right-of-way and the front yard, so you can see, it's going to be substantial distance.
Your request to go PUD from R3, would this not be permitted under a R3 zoning?
To build single-family homes? Is that a question?
Right.
Or the same development?
The same development. Could this not be done under R3? I'm going back to necessity for changing the zoning.
Not... Cannot be done to the way it's being designed. If you are going to build this under a regular R3 home, your code requires a certain size of lots, and it's more geared to a larger community where you have probably more land to work with.
Mr. Breedlove, on page two of Ms. Veranna's report on the staff evaluation recommendation, there's a table in the top of that page that shows the deviations from the current zoning standards of R3 to what's being proposed as a PUD.
Right. And he showed a proposal net density of 10.89, whereas R3 calls for 7.26.
I didn't hear all of what you said.
I said the net density proposed is 10.89. Under R3, the maximum density appears to be 7.26.
That's for the single-family... For the single-family dwelling in the R3 district, 7.26 units per acre, because it's based on a lot size. So that's the density. However, under the R3 district, you can do a different type of housing. You can do multifamily, and for that, the lot sizes get smaller, and so you could have more units on the same piece of... On the same land. So in this particular case, there is a request for a little bit higher density, but for a single-family product.
Can we be assured that single-family product will survive the life of this project? That it won't be converted to a different use?
I'm sorry I didn't hear all of your question.
Can it be assured to us as a Planning and Zoning Board that if this is approved, the PUD won't be converted from residential to some other use without a rezoning action?
Well, it would be what is set forth in the proposed PUD, so it's single-family homes.
Everything is stipulated that, along with the conditions of approval, go the site plan, so everything that's specified, and then I think we're even going to adopt the staff report, so if there's anything stated in here that wasn't stated anywhere else, so that any changes to what has been discussed would... Or approved ultimately, would need to come back in for a formal process to amend the PUD.
They'd have to do this procedure all over again.
It would come back before this...
So we can hold them to the fire? This is what this is going to be?
Yes, sir.
This is a PUD, but it's going to be this single-family residential?
Yes.
And you're not going to convert it to any other use but that?
They would not be allowed to do that without going back to square one and starting the whole process over.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm just... I've dealt with these in the past, and I've... I'm just concerned over going on a zoning that allows for higher density without a good explanation.
I understand. Actually, we could build... The density would be a lot higher if we went to multifamily.
Understand that.
And we wouldn't need any approvals. We'd just do it by right.
Right.
And that case would be just staff approval.
I do understand that.
I do have one request, if I may. In the staff report, there was a condition that we would like to have a little bit more latitude, and that's because we're exploring different types of fencing along the road. In the current condition, you had stipulated that it lasts two feet of the six-foot fence and have lattice work. We're looking at different fencing today in the landscaping fields. Their number... For example, this particular fence is one that is actually simulated rock, and it's more expensive, but we just like to see the option if we can do that, and we're trying to incorporate it, and we're just bringing it back to... You can even make it a staff approval if you want.
I think the packets say one foot, the top one foot would be lattice. I think that's been... It was a mistake on yours. It's one foot.
Oh, okay.
It's one foot. I don't think that there's a product for two feet. You probably have to do something.
Yeah, the last staff report, I saw two feet. That's why I was questioning.
It's one feet.
Where is that in your report?
It's just been changed, so sorry about that.
Okay.
But anyway, go ahead with your...
Well, if we're able to find another product, it's a little better. Even though, we looked at it this morning, for example, and the cost to us was like another 10 or 15 thousand dollars to do this product versus the lattice product. And we're okay with the cost, it's just that if the conditions specifically say that we've got to have ladders, then we will not have the ladder to do that. So, we can just say that we're going to have the fencing, and we can bring it, and you can give the staff the approval if you like. We don't have a problem with that. Staff has been great working with us. Want to thank them for the time that it had taken, they've worked very hard with us in getting a product that could work for all of us.
I will say, we do have a good staff here, and I like working with them.
If I could just add, we hadn't heard that before, but if there is decorative fencing that meets with the approval of the staff, I would recommend that we proceed with that modification to the agreement. However, I want to make sure that it does state that it's subject to the approval of the staff. Our intent was to make it look less... Or have less of a compound look, if you will, and have something that's decorative that faces Washington Street.
Right.
And it sounds like that's what Mr. Yapi's...
Exactly. I would say, leave this report as it is, but give us the option, that if we bring something else, the staff has the authority to change, to approve it, and not have to come back to the board and be 60 days out. Just trying to get that, give them the authority to approve a replacement.
Is the concern there having a six-foot board fence blocking and closing in the corridor and make it look like it's a compound?
The idea was, if the applicant needed to have a six-foot fence to at least have that top one to be sort of airy, so it wasn't looking as though the development was trying to back on...
I know that, you know, at my house, I'm limited to four feet in front of my house, along the street, anywhere other than behind my house, I'm limited to four-foot height. This difference is because he's enclosing the whole compound, so it is a compound fencing.
You're looking at the rear of the house from the street, because the house, the community's interior, so you're really looking at the back fence of somebody's house. So we were... We want to have privacy for them as well. We're going to landscape the outside, so it diminishes some of that compound look that you're thinking of. So, we just wanted to give the staff the ability to have the authority to do a replacement if we find something that is... Works for everybody.
I would have no objection to that, insofar as a staff recommendation. Like I mentioned, our idea was just to make sure it was decorative and aesthetically pleasing, and it could be integrated with the look of the neighborhood. and aesthetically pleasing and it could be integrated with the look of the neighborhood. We have not talked about this, but I think that if you decided you wanted to approve this, that you could give the staff leeway to make a final decision on the fence project or product that was agreeable to, mutually agreeable with the developer.
Sounds like it's gonna fall in on. Okay, um, thank you for explaining the fencing.
Yeah, just one clarification. So we leave the staff report as it is, but if we want to change it, the staff will have their approval process.
Well, what we were gonna do from a legal perspective, and I'm not trying to play city attorney here, but we were gonna adopt the staff report by reference in, in the ordinance. And so we would need to make a minor amendment that allows the staff the flexibility to render a final decision on the fence product.
I believe that the, the reference to the one-foot lattice is in the conditions of approval. So we would need to amend that because it's specific.
Right, but I would say, you can leave the condition, but if it is something else that is better, that works out better, to give you all the authority to, if we come to a replacement, only you can say yes or no.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting. You know, we would amend that to allow the staff the flexibility to approve a different product.
Exactly.
And I would recommend to the board that we do that.
You have anything further to bring to our attention?
No, any other questions you may have, we'll have to answer. These homes are gonna be built by National Builder. D.R. Horton is the company that is gonna be building the homes.
Do you have that home, the company chosen?
Yes, D.R. Horton.
D.R. Horton?
Yes, well-known national company.
Is he the only company, the only builder allowed?
That is, D.R.'s gonna be the only builder, yes, correct. It's gonna be an exclusive community for them.
Just as a point of curiosity, where do they plan to start building? At the front of the lots or at the front of the project work back or the back work forward?
Well, that, we probably would wanna build a model in the very front. Is that something else that your code does not allow, which is kind of, a lot of municipalities allow you to build a model without utilities to just keep going? Unfortunately, your code does not allow that today. It would be great if we figured out a way to do it, but we're, we're probably just gonna build it right up at the front.
So you'll start the front part and?
Yeah, just because you have a model, you have people come in, you don't want to take them all the way to the back.
I noticed that some of the conditions, Mr. O'Neill, and I forget your name, I'm sorry.
Tammy.
Tammy, are listed under notes rather than incorporated in the site plan. One of them is a improvement to a park. Under a PUD, they have recreational lands and green spaces contiguous. But we're allowing them to do something to a park, has that been defined?
No, it's just required at this point. But we haven't reached a final agreement on the specifics of the improvements.
Location?
We've spoken to off-site improvements at the city-owned park that's a little bit north of this property. I think it's the H.R. Cook Park, a triangular piece of land that has city equipment and it's noted as a city park.
I've seen that park, it doesn't look like it's much of a public park, it's.
Yes, it's city-owned.
Any other questions?
No.
Before we proceed further though, Mr. O'Neill, I noticed that we had comments from the general public requested and then we've not given them the chance to address their public comments. Could we segue off to do that?
Yes, this is a public hearing and public comment would be appropriate whenever you believe it to be.
Well, is, any other questions before the gentleman standing?
No, I would ask them to stay in case.
Sure, sure, we'll wait to see what the public has to say and we'll be glad to answer any questions or concerns.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, at this time, I would like to allow for comments from the general public. I have two people who have signed in to do so, Mr. Tom Brown.
Thomas Brown, seventy-four thirty-six Candlelight Court. I don't understand how you can put a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home on a forty-foot wide lot. Trailers, mobile homes are longer than forty foot. That's, my house, I haven't measured the front, but I'm sure it's over fifty feet. And I don't live in a palace, just a nice three-bedroom home. Forty feet? I mean, probably from that wall to that wall is forty feet. Doesn't seem like much to put a house on.
This is the width of the lot.
And if it's gonna be four thousand square feet, then it has to go back a hundred feet.
Well, that's the size of the lot.
Forty by a hundred. To have the front of your house limited to, it can't be forty feet because you can't go right to the property line on both sides. So how far does the house have to be from the property line? Ten feet? Five feet? Now you're limited to thirty feet to build a house on.
If the board desires, that might be a question you would ask of the developer?
Point well made, I think the developer may want to address the house plan, the type of house plan, but let's hear the rest of Mr. Brown's comments and we might invite him back up to address that. Okay with you, sir?
Yeah, I'm just picturing these coal mine towns in Pennsylvania where the houses are twenty-five feet wide, three stories tall, and it's one right after the other.
I know the picture you're bringing to mind, but I've seen the pictures for these houses that's in the package and it's quite impressive what they can do with that. It's not really the traditional front space in a house. Let's have the developer approach.
Okay, one more thing, if this fence is gonna be six foot tall, how many hundreds of feet are there on Washington Street?
How many?
How many feet facing Washington Street is this property? Two hundred?
Again, that might be a question our developer can address.
It seems to me no matter what you build a fence out of, six feet by two hundred feet would be ugly.
Well, the last thing they want to do, make it ugly, but again, that's a, that's a good point made and will be addressed here. Is there anything further, Mr. Brown?
Well, I don't know, is this a time to address a contradictory city ordinance? No, okay, that's it.
If I could ask the developer to address his, I think viable concerns, sell us on your house.
Yes, we actually provided some floor plans and designs to the staff on how these things would look. And there are different models. You, a lot of homes today that are being built are built in thirty, thirty-five foot widths. And they are two stories, they're single stories. So the gentleman may not be used to living in that type of home, but that is what is in the marketplace today. And you're trying to make entry-level points for people to live in a house. And, and I don't know the price yet, mention two-hundred thousand dollars, we haven't figured out yet. Sure, sure. So we, we, is the market in Polk County, Pasco County, Tampa, Nellis County, forty-foot lots work?
He raised the question of the fence and the length of the fence, that's actually is a real good question. Are you gonna have the fence along the public roads or around the entire perimeter?
Uh, we're gonna have a fence along Washington Avenue. In the center, there will be a break for the entry gates and the, the name of the project. We're going to wrap on the sides of the property only up to a point because the vegetation takes over from that point on. And so we don't need to go all the way back.
What about on Broadway Avenue?
On Broadway Avenue, yes, fence will go down on Broadway until we can pass the ditch, because there's a big ditch in there.
Did you ask to make fifteen hundred feet of fence?
Total together? Uh, it's actually a little bit more, it's about probably eighteen hundred and change.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it is. And we're trying to make the front of Washington Avenue a little more covered up with landscaping, a lot of property against the fence, so you break that monotonous look. We're also gonna have columns along Washington Avenue.
I don't know if this is the right forum for this question. I'll ask it and let Mr. O'Neill direct me, but Washington Street is in somewhat disrepair. Are there any plans to improve that?
I can speak to that. It is included on our current street project list for resurfacing and reconstruction. That project will go to bid this month and probably construction will occur in the early spring.
Any plans for Broadway?
No, there are none.
What are the conditions of Broad, I've not driven down Broadway actually myself, so I don't know the current condition.
East of Washington Street, it is in poor condition. West of Washington Street is in good condition.
Where his exit only is gonna be, he's gonna be exiting out onto Broadway, is that a daily exit only? Or is that just an emergency exit?
It's an exit-only gate. Most of the people will probably pick up the other, the main entrance. But it is designed, because you're required to have two means of exits. So, and it will be an emergency also for the, for the fire.
But it'll be a daily use?
They could use it daily, it's electric, it's controlled.
Is the road in that area sufficient for?
Well, the, the way that it's, the project is designed, most of the uses, the ingress egress will take place off Washington Street. And the second entrance is provided for emergency and other egress when necessary.
But if I were living there, I was living in Lot twenty-seven, I might very well prefer to exit on the Broadway as opposed to making that sharp turn there at the entrance to make the exit onto Washington. So that's my question.
It would be very few. It will be the path of least resistance to go to the, to the main entrance.
It will.
Yeah.
The concern there was whether Washington was of adequate condition to support further development at this time.
The other thing I want to mention, whether Washington is, it will be reconstructed. Broadway, east of Washington Street, is a county road.
Interesting, okay, that's county. I'm glad to learn something every day, this is my learning point for today, thank you.
Me too.
Any other questions?
I think I, I hate hog the microphone, but I've been reading over this for several days.
Sure.
Trying to read into what, you know, what's behind this. I, I like the way it's looking, I like the fact you're taking a eyesore and converting it into a use, and I like the fact that you're trying to improve the neighborhood. Along Washington Street, which is currently a problematic access, is there gonna be any kind of a sidewalk along there?
There is a sidewalk now, we are actually required to make a modification to it. There was a design of a ninety-degree angle, we're gonna take the angle out and make it a soft turn. So if you come in a bicycle, you're not gonna have to go like this. So we, we are going, that's actually in the, in the staff.
I did see that, and which may, brings to mind, I'm trying to remember that, whether that sidewalk's continuous through there, if it has a break.
Well, it will be continued, you know, across our driveway?
No, 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 the length of your property.
Um, I think it goes all the way across, yeah, I think it goes all the way across, yeah.
Thank you, sir, for addressing that. We have one other, I believe this is Jerry Brown has asked to address the council, or the meeting?
Yes, my name's Jerry Brown. And it's, I'm from Candlelight Court, New Port Ritchie. And I know that the back end of that property goes down into Candlelight. There's like about three homes that are in there that backed up into that property. And the gentleman with the canal, there's that, I don't know, ditch, canal, whatever it is, one of the drains that's in Candlelight Court goes through to that canal, okay? And then there's Lake Cox at the back end of it, the back end of that property. My concern is, is that, you know, there's a lot of runoff with new homes, you know, and, and is it gonna be a problem for the Candlelight folks? Because on two occasions, I've been there for thirty-three years, and on two occasions, those streets flooded, okay, really bad from runoff.
Which streets?
Candlelight, the whole Candlelight up to around, oh, I would say halfway down, almost to the, 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 like, you know, I know names of people to say, but I mean, yeah, to the end. And, and it was, two or different occasions, it was a lot of water, a lot of upper flooding and it washed down and into the canals, it washed into the, the lake. The drain backed up and into Candlelight Court, the, the lake overflowed into Candlelight Court. I mean, they were using boats and it lasted about two weeks, the one. Another one was a lesser event, you know, and I know that there was flooding in there too on those things. My concern with the developer would be, are you planning something for some of that runoff? Because it could potentially, you know, cause a lot more flooding in our development as we go along. Because that, there, you said there's a canal, but after the canal, there's cropping that goes behind several of those homes.
I could speak to that, and then I would ask for the engineer to follow up my comments. The proposal will be subject to the current swift mud requirements that were not in place when Candlelight was built. So they are required to treat and retain their stormwater that's created from the impervious surface that's built. It will not impact Candlelight at all.
Where would it go?
It'll go into the wetlands, the ultimate discharge.
To the wetlands, or what comes into Candlelight Court?
It will not cause a flooding problem, the engineer, it will not cause a flooding problem in Candlelight. The engineer can speak to that.
Josh Bradley, I'm at fifteen nine zero three Leather Leaf Lane. I'm with Native Engineering, working for the developer. As, as Mr. O'Neill stated, we have to permit through swift mud. So whatever, we are required, you were talking about rain events, we're required to run the one-hundred-year twenty-four-hour rain event. Right, well, we run it through our entire site. Anything that flows onto our site and any impervious area that we propose, any improvements on our site, we have to run through a drainage pond. That drainage pond will be controlled with a control structure, so we can control the flow out of that drainage pond. And it cannot, it cannot be faster or bring any more volume than what is in the existing condition. So I, I can't say that you'll never flood again because you flooded twice already in thirty-two years, which in this area isn't, isn't as bad as some other areas that can, that can be, you know, there's a lot of flooding.
Yeah, but in Pasco County, there's a lot of areas, once they built, that they ended up with flooding.
Right.
And I'm sure they were built with the swift mud recommendations.
They, they were, this, those are larger sites, when you see, look at the larger sites, they, those tend to have a lot more impact. This area has already had, the road's already constructed, actually, the stormwater, the drainage has already been constructed. We're gonna have to add a note to our plans that all roof drains are directed towards the front of the lot and into the system, so you won't have, you know, rainwater falling on roofs and just going directly to the backyard and directly into the wetland. Because it has to be treated, we have to clean the water before it goes out to the wetland. So they, I will say that swift mud is much more stringent, and they have been the last five years on just dealing with drainage. And so I think that, you know, just to get through swift mud and get our approvals, we have to have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed, so.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Is Candlelight below you in elevation?
You know, I don't know that, I, I don't have an overall site, I believe it is.
I can show you.
Okay.
It was a hundred-year flood dive, that's what it was built on.
Yeah, again, I don't have elevations, I, I don't know if it's, if it's, I don't know if this green represents the flood plain or not. I believe it does, I believe the green area delineates the flood plain. So this would say it's higher, because it's outside the flood plain, this road, according to this map.
But you don't know which direction the water, when it leaves the site, is headed, is it headed south?
Yeah, it heads this way, through here inside, that's where it's.
So it heads east and south? Where is your detention pond?
It's in the middle of the site. It's already, it was already permitted and constructed. And so we're gonna leave it as it is because actually the proposed development's gonna have a lot less impervious area than the existing permitted development, so the pond's gonna be oversized.
Area here in the middle, or is it a separate facility?
Nope, it's directly right in the middle, that larger, it's actually. Nope, it's directly right in the middle of that larger. It's actually an existing wetland that was cut off from the main wetland, and so you can use that wetland to help treat the water, uh, before it heads. There's a little canal, like a, a ditch, uh, culvert that runs underneath the road right now and back out. That's after it's cleaned.
Control office on that?
That's correct, yeah. And we're gonna have to prove either utilize the existing control office and control structure, um, or, you know, modify it to, to, to meet the, the flows.
So, you're gonna hold the hundred-year storm and meter it out to the pre-development levels?
I don't think we, we don't hold, well, uh, you're right, we hold it as far as the top of banks go, but the, the pond will start discharging at the twenty-five-year rate. Uh, and we clean it, you know, we clean the first inch of runoff that, that, that comes across. That's what you're required, required to do in that area, is just, is you treat the, the oils and the, and the, and the garbage and whatnot that comes off the roads at first stage.
Does your engineering show that the current drainage was, will handle the storm that we're looking at now?
I have not done any engineering, other than just the, the PUD, but I have, I have had several meetings with swift mud on this site. Uh, and I've reviewed the, the previous permit. The previous permit, um, was set up for a hundred ninety-two homes, and about twenty percent more, it's not exact, but about fifteen to twenty percent more impervious area. The buildings were bigger. You, you saw, we're taking away the parking. Uh, there's no more parking spaces, obviously. You don't need them for single-family homes, so a lot, much less impervious area, uh, than what was proposed before. We're not proposing to change the size of the drainage pond. So, in, in, in theory, it's gonna be well oversized for what we're planning to do.
Provided the standards then were equal to standards.
And they are, they are.
Mr. O'Neil, can you address that?
Let me give you some additional information. Uh, in addition to, um, the submittal by the developer and their engineer, we conduct an independent review with our own independent engineer. Um, that's provided locally through Florida Design Consultants and, and Steve Wasson, who acts as our city engineer. They review all of the calculations, uh, and in this particular case, the post-development discharge from this site will not exceed the pre-development discharge from this site. So, it will not cause any other flooding problems, and we review that independently to make sure that that has been done correctly.
So, the concern brought up tonight, uh, additional flooding, uh, you've addressed that by holding water back and metering it out.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, you're not metering it, but yeah, you hold, you hold it back and control it with the size of the opening. That's what we model and calculate, the size of the opening, to see how fast the water goes out. It's important to note, too, that because it discharges to a wetland, we can't just hold off all the wa- uh, the, the runoff that used to go to the wetland, because the wetland needs that runoff as well, uh, because it's been used to it for all these years. So, we, we try to match it as close as we can, uh, with our, with our calculations to keep it healthy.
And we review all of their information and their engineering calculations independently, uh, with a, a contract engineer.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes the, um, members of the general public who wish to address. Um, any further discussion?
I would just ask if anybody else wants to ask a question.
Okay. Do we have any other, uh, if you would come up, please, and give your name and address, and your comments, please.
Hi, I'm Claudia Smith. I live at seven three three five Candlelight Court. Uh, just to show a hands from the board that is making this decision, how many people have driven to this property and looked at it? How many people have driven down Broad, Broadway, and how many people have gone into Candlelight Court to see that subdivision? Okay.
Can I raise my half of my hand?
Because if you're gonna make the decision, it seems to me you should be very familiar with the area. This is my home.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And, uh, I, I like the thought that we're, we're, we're going to have seventy-eight houses as opposed to a hundred and ninety. Um, but I am concerned about the traffic that it's gonna throw on Washington. It's really good to hear that we are gonna get Washington taken care of, but if you have seventy out, eight, seventy-eight houses, and you figure that there's at least one car for every house, that seventy-eight cars that are gonna exit every day and come back to that property, if you double that, more than likely, there's a two-salary, uh, people working in that house, that's a lot of traffic. So, I wanna make sure that we are gonna fix Washington, but it seems to me the developer should help and make sure that it's done right.
It is a city public right-of-way, and the improvements to Washington that will consist of both resurfacing and reconstruction will be funded from the city's Transportation Impact Fee Fund. Of which they contributed to, the prior developer did.
Okay, that's good to hear. Um, is there gonna be any, like a pool, a clubhouse, anything like that, or is it just gonna be houses? Okay, just houses. Okay. Um, I think that's it. I just, if you haven't been there, please tour all around there before you make this decision. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, just to address the question, I've traveled Washington several times a week. I have stopped and looked at this site on many occasions out of curiosity and also in respect to this request. I will admit, I have not driven down Broadway, um, which while I address those questions, I can look down it as I pass it, and it doesn't look appealing. And no, I've not been to Candlelight, but I hope to address that also. Yes, ma'am? Would you please step forward and identify yourself and where you live, please?
My name's Debbie Hogan, and I own the house at fifty-eight hundred Queener, um, which pretty much backs up to their property. Um, and I just wanna say that I'm happy that they are coming in and doing something with Washington Street. I've looked at it for seven years now, and I've also, it's brought in a lot of, um, uh, things that we don't want, uh, in our neighborhoods, uh, because there's nothing there to keep them out, you know? Um, whether it be people, or animals, or whatever. So, I, I just wanna raise my hand and say I'm thankful, uh, that all this is happening.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who would like to address this? Okay. That'll close the public comments section of this meeting. Any comments from up here in discussion? Any of the other board members have discussion or questions? Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Yep. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion second, but have a question from council.
Um, did you wanna just, um, mention to modify the conditions of approval to allow flexibility in the fence style?
Let's do that in the discussion section here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's quite right. Um, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Comments and discussion. You would like to add language to allow for choice of fencing?
In condition number eleven.
Answer that, would you?
Yeah, right.
And that was on the...
That was the conditions of approval.
Conditions, only conditions of approval?
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
And, and we would just add a phrase to allow flex, flexibility in the fence style.
Subject to staff approval.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Subject to staff approval. Good catch.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Is that, is that the full motion?
I think we need to revise the motion then. Jane, would you?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, defense amendment and the approval by the, the staff.
Yes, so you, you could make a motion if you thought it acceptable to approve the request to rezone the property and modify the language, uh, that Ms. Veranda mentioned, to allow for alternatives and flexibility by the staff in approval of the fence product.
What he said.
Thank you, Jane. A motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have multiple seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the public for coming out. Do we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and, no, we're not adjourning yet. We got another item to cover. Under the recommended motion, you had said language earlier, ma'am, that you wanted to case number, make that as Cody River Project?
Yes.
So, we'll incorporate that language?
In the, oh, in the Cody River PUD dash twenty fourteen. Didn't have a case number, so, sorry.
Okay.
Reading.
I think we're done with that issue. Next on the agenda is review of city, city fence regulations. Mr. O'Neil, would you address that with us, please?
Yes, uh, in the packet tonight, uh, is an item that has been included for your review, uh, and recommendation to the city council. Uh, there has been ongoing discussions at the council level regarding, uh, the current fence regulations. We've included those in the packet, uh, that now are expressed as section twenty-two dash ninety of the city code. Um, you'll see that, uh, the last three, four pages, excuse me, in your packet. Um, the discussion tonight, um, I, I just wanna add, is your review, your recommendation as to, should there be any changes to the current regulations? Uh, it's not about an ongoing dispute, or whether the city acted correctly in resolving that dispute. Um, it's whether or not that you believe, uh, that any of the regulations should be changed. If indeed, uh, you discuss that in detail, that recommendation will go to the city council, uh, and, uh, they will indeed consider that and act as they deem appropriate.
Thank you. I do have some questions on this. Uh, I did read this, and the surrounding history seems to involve whether or not a body of water is natural or man-made, and to me, the language is confusing.
Okay.
Uh, I specifically point to section F, paragraph one and two, specifically, except as otherwise provided herein for property located on a canal or natural body of water, no fence or wall shall exceed six feet in height from the front of any building to the rear property line. And two, it says no fence shall be erected at a height greater than four feet on residential property along a canal or any natural body of water. Limitation of height of any such fence shall apply to fences constructed along and from the waterfront property line to the nearest building line on the property. That's where I have a question with the language. Limitation of height of any such fence shall apply to fences constructed along and from the waterfront property line to the nearest building line on the property. Would you define what building line they're speaking of?
Well, what I might tell you is that, um, I think that when looking at that, I, I can understand your comment as to it being confusing, and if you decide that you'd like to make a recommendation as a board regarding alternative language, that's the purpose of this meeting. Uh, so, you know, I'm not here really to recommend one way or another to you. It's whatever you feel is appropriate that may clear up the confusion that you mentioned in the ordinance.
Well, to me, it looks like, I don't know, that when they say building line, are they talking the actual rear of the building, or are they talking the building setback line?
Uh, the building itself.
So, the rear portion of the building.
I believe that was the intent, and I don't wanna, uh, the city attorney may have some further comments on it.
As we state, from the back of the house, going toward the water, we want no higher than a four-foot fence, so as to not block view from, I mean, I'm, I'm seeking guidance.
That's the part that you think is confusing, and I understand your position on that. And the reason for it being on the agenda is if you desire to suggest some alternative language, then, uh, and clear up the intent of that, then you might wanna, uh, suggest that the city attorney take a look at it and come up with some alternative language.
Could I hear from the city attorney tonight?
Yes, sir. Uh, what specifically would you like me to answer?
Uh, the intent of paragraph two, on the limiting the height of the fence from the building line, and I would say from the building line, looks like rearward to the body of water.
You referring to the second sentence? Am I correct?
I am.
Yes, sir.
So, to me, I mean, after going through it and hatching through it, I finally figured out what building line means, but to me, the nearest building line, I'm so used to building lines being a regulatory line in the sand for the house to stay away from, that I didn't take that to mean the actual structure. Uh, if it was said for the building structure.
That, that I believe was the intent, but not being involved when this was initially drafted, I can't assume their intent, but I would read that as the actual building structure.
Okay.
Be my interpretation of that sentence. But that's definitely something that, that can be cleaned up, either through changing the language or providing definitions.
Well, I'm reading over this. I, I did stumble on that, so I can understand if there was some confusion from some issue on that. Um, the board members, any discussion from the other?
That fence that you speak of, from the water to the building, cannot be higher than four feet, but the city manager can waive it to be six feet.
Mr. Brown, can you please come to the podium and make sure you state your name in that next time you speak?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. If you would reiterate, but give us your name again.
Thomas Brown, Candlelight Court. The fence you speak of, from the water to the building, can only be four feet tall. Later on in the ordinance, they give the city manager the right to waiver it to six feet. And if you're trying to look at a body of water across the street from your house, a six-foot fence is quite an obstruction.
I do see that in paragraph six. It says, "Upon a demonstration and written request by any property owner that complies with the provisions of subsections F of this section could create a potential health, safety, or welfare hazard, city managers authorize to waive the height requirements of the erection of a fence, but in no event to exceed six feet in height. Further, the city manager may authorize construction of a privacy fence not to exceed six feet along any residential property line which abuts a public park or trail." Um, Mr. Attorney, is that standard language in...
There really is no standard language. A lot of codes do provide for some sort of, uh, exception or appeal to some of the code, uh, and that's one section that I would request that, uh, the board provides some guidance, uh, whether it's the board's opinion that, that authorities should continue to arrest in the city manager, or if it should be directed somewhere else, say, uh, the board of adjustment, or directly to city council.
Is this a ordinance, or is this a development regulation?
This is all codified by ordinances, so this would have to be amended through an ordinance modification.
So, if we're talking about ordinance, within the ordinance, we've authorized a single person to make changes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Do you have further comment?
One more thing on the F two that you spoke of.
Yes, sir.
It's contradictory. It states that a resident may not obstruct the view of a canal, which by definition is an artificial waterway made by humans to imitate nature. But it allows for a resident to obstruct the view of a dug lake that is also an artificial waterway made by humans to imitate nature.
Which section are you reading from?
F two. Oh, five, five, thirty-six, F two. You can obstruct one dug waterway, but you can't obstruct the other dug waterway. That doesn't make sense to me. Uh, I'm not reading from the ordinance, uh, word for word.
Okay, thank you, 'cause I, I'm reading this, and I'm not seeing, I don't doubt that somewhere in here, it says that, but it...
In city ordinance, it says you cannot block the view of a canal, but you can block the view of a man-dug lake. In city ordinance, it says you cannot block the view of a canal, but you can block the view of a man-dug lake. A canal is a man-dug waterway.
Mr. Attorney, is that the language that you understand?
That sounds about correct.
So our, our point here is whether or not the waterway is natural or man-made.
Yeah, one man-made you can obstruct, the other one you can't.
He makes a point.
Five of the water that are referenced in here are canals and natural bodies of water. They are specifically listed in here. So that would be intended for whoever drafted this at this time that this specifically applied to canals and also to natural bodies of water. It didn't address other large retention ponds or other man-made bodies of water. And that's how they, that's how they drafted it. And obviously, they wanted canals in there due to the large number of canals we have in this city.
And canals are man-made, but-
That is correct.
For me, I feel like the ordinance could be clarified and could very easily be reworded to make it a little clearer.
My initial recommendation were to look at and either define or somehow modify the language which refers to a natural body of water. And also get some guidance on the appeal process. Who, who should an appeal go to? Should there, should there even be an appeal in there? Should it remain with the city manager or should it go through some other, some other avenue? Which my recommendation would be the Board of Adjustment and would be the-
So at my house, where I wanna put a six-foot fence out to the road, I could go to speak to Tom O'Neill and he could authorize that should I convince him it was necessary.
If it falls under the categories in here of F six.
That means I've gotta show it's gonna create a potential health, safety, or welfare hazard.
Yes, typically, I would tell you that most situations that allow for an appeal allow for an appeal to a Board of Adjustments as opposed to the city manager. I would recommend that we modify that to take the city manager out of it.
I'm glad to hear you say that.
What's that?
I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yes, I'd recommend that it go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. In my prior lifetime, it, it went to the Land Development Review Board, which sat as a Board of Adjustments. And indeed, the city attorney could be directed, if you see that it's appropriate, to clarify the language regarding man-made or natural bodies of water. And we could come back to you at a future meeting.
Do you have any further comments, sir? Thank you very much for your comments. Any further comments from the board?
Is there any existing rules and regulations on fences now?
I believe this is what we're looking at here, isn't it?
This is the existing one?
Yes.
This one, we're trying to change it, trying to improve.
Yeah, and it's, it's a given that we're not expecting to have a final resolution on this tonight. The city attorney needs some time to work this out and develop alternative language.
I would just request some direction from the board on where they wanna go with this.
Well, in your experience from both of you, is there an item or two in here that seems to be recurring that comes up, that a homeowner comes up here and has a problem with?
Yeah, I think we need to develop a greater clarity with regard to a man-made or natural body of water and whether or not that the fence regulations apply to a man-made body of water. Additionally, the issue of directing an appeal to the city manager, I believe, should be changed and, and that authority vested in the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Any further discussion from the board? Do we have a recommendation, or do we need to make a motion on this?
We need to make a motion to approve this?
Well, I, I think to approve directing the city attorney to develop the alternative language that was discussed. And then we would plan on bringing it back to you for your review.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we direct this to the city attorney for further evaluation and get back with this.
Have a motion and second, do we have any further discussion before we make a vote? No further, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, let's put this back to discussion. Didn't hurt too bad. I, I appreciate the fact we can do that because I felt like after looking at it, that parts of the fence ordinance was confusing, so I can understand that. I believe that, do we, before we adjourn, do we have any further business before this board from the city? Not being-
Make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.